Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is a meeting of the committee as a whole. It's December 12, 2022. I'm Council President Nick J. Mosby, and we're reconvening from a recess hearing on Bill number 22-0195, a November 17 meeting. At that meeting, we were able to hear testimony, not just from the bill sponsor as she presented the bill, but also from the community, folks who were in opposition of it and a lot of folks who were in support of it. I thought it was a very productive hearing, and this is our follow-up. Just to kind of go over, run a show, the strategy today is going to be to talk about some of the amendments that are being proposed for the bill so we can all be on the same page associated with the proposed amendments and answer any additional questions or concerns that the council members might have. Before I turn it over to the sponsor of the bill, I would like to recognize from the First District, Councilman Zeke Cohen. I would like to recognize from the 10th District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter.
Thank you.
I would like to recognize from the 12th District, Chairman Stokes. I would like to recognize from the 4th District, Chairman Conway. And to my right, I know the back of his head because of his hair. I would like to recognize from the 8th District, Councilman Burnett, Chairwoman McCray from the 2nd District, Madam Vice President from the 6th District, and last but certainly not least, Councilmember Bullock from the 9th District. And I also see that we have Chairman Yitzhak Sleifer, who also just walked in. So as discussed, what we're going to do is I'm going to allow the sponsor of the bill to kind of go over her, some of the proposed amendments that we currently have. She provided a really nice overview for the council earlier today. And with that said, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just first, before we get started, I do want to thank my colleagues for being here today. This is a very important bill, and I'm really grateful for all of your time and the conversations that we've had. I also want to thank DHCD, the advocates, the development community, HABC, Law Department, Finance, and a lot of others that have spent a lot of time the last two weeks trying to get to yes on this bill. And I am really happy to say we are really close, and I'm really excited about it. So what we're going to do today is just go over the overview first. I'm going to do an overview of where we are on the bill, and then we're going to go into various specific amendments and answer any questions, and then have a, you know, public conversation about the last remaining item that we still need to work out. So we're excited about that. So I did present to my colleagues a brief one-pager to just sort of go over where we are. But first, a reminder about what inclusionary housing is. Can you hear me? Oh, he turned them off. Okay, can you hear me now? Great. Apologies for that. Just a reminder, first of all, about what inclusionary housing is. Inclusionary housing is one of many tools that we need to make sure we have more affordable housing in our city. It is also a tool much needed to ensure that areas that people would like to live in but can't because of costs are now more accessible. It also is designed, in many jurisdictions, including ours, to make sure that the racist policies of the past segregating our communities starts to end with this bill. So we had an inclusionary bill in 2007. Many folks who are actually here have worked on that, and it has been disappointing that we have not had more units produced with that bill. And we went over this a little bit during the last hearing. I'm just giving a little bit of an overview and context as we move forward. One of the big things that was problematic in the formal legislation was that there were so many waivers. And so only about 34 to 37 units were made in 15 years with that inclusionary bill, which is unacceptable. And so in February, the council president asked me to introduce this bill to update our inclusionary policy. So it was introduced in February. The old law subsequently expired in July, and so now we are completely out of compliance with our affirmatively furthering fair housing plan to HUD. However, we are working diligently to come back into compliance and pass a really good inclusionary bill. And I'm really excited to share that we are, again, really close. So that's all context. Where we are now with the new amendments that are being presented today, this is sort of the, this is the overview. So any development, and we're talking about rental here, we are removing the ownership requirements. We need to do that in a separate bill because it's a little bit more complicated. So any development citywide with 20 or more units that is already getting a major public subsidy, which could be a tax credit or a TIF or a pilot, if it's already getting a subsidy or planning on applying for a subsidy, has to comply with this bill. And they would present an inclusionary plan at the point-of-sight review when the development goes to planning and DHCD to go over their project. So the requested, or the requirement is that the development has to have at least 10% of their units be available for 60% AMI, families making 60% AMI. We're going to talk about the additional subsidy funding in just a second, but this is the requirement. If DHCD or any other entity in the city has additional subsidy for housing families 50% are below area median income, the development will be asked to apply for those various programs available. For instance, HABC has project-based voucher program that is significantly underutilized but could be available for that five, additional 5%, so that the total would be 15%. So that we would ask for an additional 5% affordability in those, in that development if there is additional subsidy. We have worked out the affirmative marketing. The Law Department had a question about that, and we've addressed that, making sure that marketing is happening to make, so that folks who are least likely to apply would absolutely get a chance to apply for these units. We have put in the inclusionary board, well, the inclusionary board has always been there, but in this case, we are reducing the number of inclusionary board members to nine in this version and giving them all of the powers needed to approve or at least review the regulations and approve additional subsidy. And more importantly, that this is a floor so that if there are other developments that come up that want additional TIF or subsidy, et cetera, we are not limited to 10%, and we are not limited to the 5%, that this is a floor. So that language is in these new amendments. So I'm, again, really excited that we've had a lot of conversations over many hours to get where we are. Where we need to continue the conversations is around this additional subsidy for the 10% of the units at 60% AMI. We have several proposals on the table that we're working through, which, again, I think this is a good thing. One is a parking reduction, which may require another bill, density bonus, which also may require another bill because we would have to amend the zoning code. And then a proposal, what I'm calling, this may not be the correct, you know, terminology, but a dollar-for-dollar write-off. So what this would look like is for the market rent that would be collected for those 10%, it would be the, this write-off would be the difference between the market rent that's being collected and the rent that the unit would collect with 60% AMI. And then the, at the end of the year, there would be a lot of reporting, and the developer would say to the city, "We took this much of a loss." In my spreadsheet that I presented last meeting, it was about $90,000 in the scenario that I had. And the scenarios are differ between, you know, what kind of units and how much rent and all of that, but let's just use that for now. Then the idea is that it would be a dollar-for-dollar write-off on the property taxes. So they're already getting subsidy, and then they would write off that particular amount on their taxes. And so the question becomes, can we put that on the market rate rental tax credit, which we would have to pass a separate legislation, or is there wording to be able to do this? Here's the thing, what we're asking that the development community to do, you have to justify that you need it, and then go through this process with the commissioner to come up with one or more of these subsidies. So that's where we are. And frankly, you know, again, I think, I think we're pretty close. As people have been reviewing the amendments that were just submitted about an hour and a half ago, there are a couple of other tweaks that need to be made, but I think we're getting, we're getting very close. So that's my general overview, and I would point to, my colleagues have a nice chart that we have written up that has what the current bill says, what the amended language is that you saw at the last hearing, which was dated 9/25, and the amendment language that should actually say 12/12 and not 12/5. And so you'll see, because the chart is probably easiest to look at and not necessarily the actual amendments. And then there's also the redlined that has also been presented. So you'll see in the chart, Amendment Number One is renumeration with the new amendments. Amendment Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six, Seven, Eight are the same, so is Nine, same 10, same 11. These are all definitions. There is a new Amendment 12 that talks about the inclusionary board. We'll actually apologize to the commissioner that we have not talked directly about the nine members, but I know we've been talking about reducing the number of members on the inclusionary board. So that is what that is. It is a little difficult to see, but in the capital letters, you'll see the new membership of the board. I'll just say it here. Two must have community experience in the field of housing, community development, planning, or social services, or public health. Two must be lenders with experience in community development and affordable housing finance. One must be a renter earning an income at or below 60% of AMI. One must be a renter earning up below, at or below 30%. One must have legal experience with fair housing. Must have legal experience with affordable housing finance. One must be a nonprofit affordable developer. One is a for-profit affordable, a for-profit developer. And that is, that might sound very familiar to many of you because it is adapted from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So we know that that has been, you know, ongoing. So Amendment 13, the old 12 is new 13 is the same. Old 13, new 14 is the same. There's a new Amendment 15. I'm on page 13 of the chart. This clarifies the responsibilities of the, of the inclusionary board, reviewing reports, advising the commissioner, reviewing and commenting on inclusionary housing plans. The Law Department has pointed out that, number one, up here on page 14, reviewing and approving regulations promulgated. The board may not have authority to approve, so we would change that to just review. So Amendment 16 is the same, 17, 18, same, same, same. 19 is, I'm on page 16 of the chart, on page 16, line 10. So this would basically say what I had said earlier, that this bill is a floor and not a ceiling when it comes to more affordability and negotiating. And then we also have a clause in here about exclusions. It was brought to our attention that residential care facilities and student housing may need to be exempt from the bill. So that's what that is there. 20 is basically making sure that if the developer is planning on, in addition to if they are getting or also planning on getting, they need to submit an affordable housing plan. And then we have our new language about affirmative marketing, which was pointed out to me, we may need to make one little other tweak there. I'm on page 19 of the chart, the new amendment on additional subsidies. So this is the language that I talked about, about when the developer is required to do the 10% for 60% AMI, that this additional subsidy would be available, the way that I had said it, and that is still the place that we need to address in our conversations I'm now on page 21 of the chart. We just had to make sure that everything was consistent. That was a technical amendment. And then we have some reporting. Amendment 24 is clarifying the reporting. And then New Amendment 26 is also technical. And Amendment 29 clarifies that the affordability period is 30 years and that if the majority ownership or control is changed, then the affordability period starts over. And that just changes it to majority control. And then there is, you know, a renumeration at the end. So that's where we are. Happy to take any questions of the council members and my colleagues, and I know that people are here to answer, agencies are here to answer questions. I will say this, this question about the, I call it a dollar-dollar for write-off. I don't know that that's the proper way of saying it, but this is, you know, how we've been talking about it. We know that there's been some analysis done, so we want to see a little bit more about that and just have this part of the conversation very public so that folks know what we're trying to think through. So, Mr. President, I really appreciate the time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, again, for putting the overview together for council members and walking us through it tonight. At this point, we're going to open up questions or concerns for members of the body, for either the sponsor or agencies that are here. Do we have any questions? I see the hand of Councilman Cohen. Floor is yours. And before you go in, Councilman Cohen, I would also like to recognize Councilmember, Chairman from the 11th District, Councilman Eric Costello. I think also for the record, it's important for us, to ensure that we know everyone who's here from the agency, so if you could just announce who you are and where you're from just for the general public to understand and know the administration's commitment to, I'll do it, well, if you could just announce Chairwoman, Commissioner Kennedy from the, from the housing.
Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner, Baltimore City, DHCD. With me this evening, I have Stacy Fried, Executive Advisor to the Commissioner, and Stephanie Murdock, our legislative liaison.
And Deputy CFO?
Hi, Bob Sennemy, Deputy Finance Director.
And Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, along with Sophia G.
Thank you. Now, with that said, Councilman Cohen, please go into your question, comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the bill sponsor for the diligent work on this. Thank you to the agencies. Thank you to the advocates and the development community. Couple of questions/concerns. Clearly, this is urgent and needed. In the previous hearing, I'd expressed a thought that instead of providing an additional tax credit or bonus, that we might instead provide either a parking waiver or some sort of density bonus in order to enhance both the amount of people that are living and paying taxes in our city and also, frankly, respect the climate crisis that we know is impending and that the more we can do to eliminate parking requirements and push people to utilize transit, the better. So first question is, where did all that land? It was my hope and that it could serve to offset, instead of providing additional subsidy, that we could have, we could utilize density bonus or a parking waiver in place of further subsidizing the development when folks are seeking inclusionary housing.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. So as I mentioned earlier, we kind of, where we landed on that was that it would be one of three or four options that the developer could ask for and the commissioner could grant. However, we would still, as I understand from the Lot Department, we would still need to pass an ordinance to allow for that to happen and change the zoning code, and change the zoning code. So, and same with the density bonus. So I think it's definitely, and then the other piece is what the, some folks were talking about was that it's a, it's an upfront cost, that it saves them on the building side but doesn't help long-term, although honestly, depending on how deep the, you know, parking requirement is, is done, then, you know, you could save that money and then it could be done in the long term. So that is still part of the conversations that we're working through.
Who would have the option? As in, is it DHCD? Is it the developer? How does, as currently structured?
Yes, we had talked about it. You know, the developer would submit their inclusionary plan and say, "Hey, we just can't make the numbers work without an additional subsidy, so, you know, can we, can we get parking? Can we get, you know, this write-off? Can we get?" And the commissioner would have the authority to try to work that out so that obviously would have less burden on the city, but also help, you know, make the, make the numbers work. So that's how we have it currently. I still think we need to work out the details on what that looks like and the parameters of that decision-making and that kind of thing. So that's, that's why we're here today, to continue that conversation publicly, and then your guidance will help us as we negotiate further.
Great. I would maintain that, to me, I feel much, much more comfortable with adding density and/or waiving parking requirements than I do with additional tax credit bonuses. Other question, council member, and again, appreciate all of your leadership on this. I was a little confused about sort of the piece where the developer comes in to justify whether they need the additional credit or not. To me, that starts to feel a bit subjective, and I'm not totally clear on either the mechanics of how that would work or who ultimately, I know you'd mentioned the Inclusionary Housing Board, maybe Director Kennedy or Commissioner Kennedy, apologies. That all, to me, feels a bit subjective, whereas I feel like if we are making a law that will help to fix what has, as has been documented in the press and we all know, has been truly broken, I think we need a really clear standard by which we are holding ourselves and our friends in the development community and in the advocacy community accountable in a shared agreement. So that's just the one piece that still I feel some ambivalence about is, I'm not clear who makes that determination and whether it shouldn't just be one standard for everyone? Like, I worry that how well someone presents their package could help to determine whether they get the credit or not, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, to me, that still leaves a bit of a concern and hope that we can continue to work on that piece.
Yeah, that's absolutely still in, in the works. I mean, I think what we've, what we've been doing over the last couple of weeks is going through, you know, each of the things that we needed to get agreement on. We got agreement on almost 100% except for this funding piece and how that's going to work. The last proposal was, they need to ask and we'll make the, and the city will make the decision. So we just need to work out, as you said, how exactly does that work? Do we have a much clearer standard? What is the criteria? The commissioner has also expressed, you know, make sure that it's as, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, you know, as prescriptive as possible so that, you know, it's, you know, just maintains, you know, that clarity. So we just haven't gotten that far yet. But I'm glad that you brought that up as something that we, obviously, that's something that we're still working on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or concerns from members? If not, oh, Councilman Burnett?
The question is for my colleague, Councilwoman Ramos. The, and maybe you don't have this on hand, but if you, my concern was about the marketing of the program. I know that you have in here that there's a requirement to submit affirmative marketing and a comparison of the marketing efforts to the actual building demographics over, I guess that's a 30-year period. Are there examples of what that actually looks like? You know, my concern is that if people don't know about it, they may not know or think that they can even afford to go into some of these units or buildings that are going up. And so are there examples that you can point to in other jurisdictions or you could send it to us offline to kind of get a better feel for like what that's supposed to look like, not only for us in gaining a better understanding of what that standard should be, but also for advocates that are, you know, would, would serve, in addition to the board, as some level of oversight over the implementation of this, you know, should we pass this through the, or when we pass this through the council, what that actually looks like? So just more of a, you know, if people don't know about it, you know, how are we going about that? And I guess other ways, are the agencies also required to assist with that, or is it just relying on the building, the construction, the building owner to do that?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I know that was something that was important to you as well as many others. Well, first of all, we do have examples already around affirmative marketing because of, we do have plenty of developments that use the affordable housing, low-income housing tax credits, and also home funds and others. So there's already So there's already examples of ways that developers do the marketing and the city also helps with the marketing. So I can get more specifics to the committee as to what that looks like and also some examples from other cities in terms of their inclusionary law. But we've been doing some of that and I think the Commissioner can talk a little bit about that as well. But also helping, I think what is needed in this particular case is really helping the developers who normally have not marketed to that population be able to do so. And what does that look like? So we had envisioned that that would be in the regulations. There's actually a piece that I think I accidentally took out of one of the amendments that speaks to that. And so we'll put that back in. But I think, we definitely don't want anybody saying, well, we can't fill the units, so we can't do that. That's not what's going to happen. We want folks to be able to take advantage of that. So we can get you more specifics as to how it works now. And maybe the Commissioner can talk through it. If not, we can get that for you and the committee.
Okay, and just a quick follow-up, Mr. President, on that. If there are scenarios where they're saying no one has applied, what happens to those units? Do they sit empty?
Sit empty because they have to, they have to, they have to fill it with somebody who's at that 60% AMI. We're all going to work hard to make sure they get filled.
I'm with you.
Thank you.
Council, Vice President had a question.
Vice President has a question.
Before we go to you, Madam Vice President, I have a question that is kind of in line with some of the questioning from Councilmember Burnett. I know that one of the amendments, we're removing the penalty.
The only remove, the only thing that we're removing is the penalty to take away the subsidy. What we're still keeping in there is the $1,000 a day.
I guess, what was the background in us wanting to remove that penalty?
I think that's actually a really good question, Mr. President, because that came through the last round as to when we had initially said that the development, if they're getting subsidy, then they need to do inclusionary units. And we were told that they can't just take away that subsidy. However, and I'm glad you brought this up, that if we're adding an additional subsidy for those 10%, then I think that makes sense that if they're not complying, that that needs to be removed. So I think that's where you were going?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yep. So I'm glad that you brought that up because we hadn't talked about that yet.
And did we get the background information on the project-based vouchers?
Yep, yes. And somebody's here from HABC to explain it as well. But the project-based vouchers are for families 50% or below area median income. And the idea, and I think I skipped over the language, but it's in here, the idea would be that for an additional 5% affordability that the developer would have to apply for those because they're not just given, they have to be applied for. And that, that those could be, we also have so many project-based vouchers that are being unused right now. And so this is an opportunity, I think, for that as well. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about the idea, but that's where we came at.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say around that is kind of going to Councilman Cohen's question, but on a different topic, like allowing developers to pick and choose if they're going to do that? It seems like if we had it available and they were already getting subsidies, we should somewhat potentially make it a requirement.
Yeah, the language says if they're available, they have to take it.
Yeah, so I guess the question is like, how much is normally available? How often do we use them?
Yeah, so we don't have a number of how many vouchers we have every year. And that's one of the things we couldn't put in the bill affirmatively.
So that's like a pool from the federal government? And then from there, it determines how many you're going to have in that year based off of the budget from?
Yeah, but they said that, you know, it changes every year. So they may get more or less.
Do you know how many we currently have out there?
No, but I can follow up with it, with the numbers.
All right, because I just think that that's really important. And the only reason I say this is kind of going back, I guess, to some of, my concern from the last meeting, you know, affordability is great and it's one thing, but also ensuring that we break up concentrations of poverty in our city is really important. You know, we've seen several projects come down the pipe that are 30% or below or appear to be 30% or below in communities that have been disproportionately disinvested in for far too long. And I think we just kind of go down the path of the slippery slope of, yes, 60% AMI is great, but that really does not address some of the needs of some of our residents in our city that deserve the right to live, work, and function in these amazing buildings that ultimately their tax dollars are used in the subsidized. So I just want to be really clear about, we throw around the term 60% AMI. You know, what does that really mean? I believe that's a household of like 79,000? Is it 69,000, right? For many people in our city, particularly in East and West Baltimore, 69,000 a year would be a great household income. So again, I just want to be very clear when we're talking about this that we do be very mindful of folks 50% or below or even 30% or below at times because that has to be addressed. And I don't know if we have a strategic plan that is very comprehensive and factored in all of that. And again, my concern is in East and West Baltimore, we're building a 30% or below AMI buildings, you know, the li-tech tax credit buildings left and right. We've done so many different ribbon cuttings. And, you know, in these areas, we're building nice buildings as well. But the idea that we become one city is when we're able to have a multitude of incomes living in the same communities. And I think that that's the best solution. And we understand and know that concentration of poverty has been an issue. I do have one additional question, but I'm going to move on and come back to that. I think, Madam Vice President, you have some questions.
I just want to, in fact, it's about the AMI again and just kind of piggybacking. At first, just want to thank Councilwoman Ramos for really sticking with this and just kind of creating another tool that can really help our city and stop the burdens that are placed on our residents, whether they're homeowners or renters. This is just an excellent tool. But my question too was just, and I guess the Commissioner could talk about this, a little bit more about this AMI and the 60%. Is this, because we're, you're kind of putting in an amendment and making changes, and I know there's probably been a lot of discussion back and forth where you're going to draw the lines between low, very low income, low income. And a lot of times, it affects people that are applying for applications to get into things. And I guess my question is, do you want to try to, or if you're doing it, to continue? When people apply for applications for this or anything, are you going to try to keep that AMI at an equal stance? Are you, are some people that are maybe one point in not getting accepted for certain things or they're going to be penalized? It's just a very tricky thing. And I see this happening as with some of the folks that apply for the example, the security deposit bill. So can you kind of just talk about how we're going to just try to, you know, avoid some, a resident that just might be one little point from being helped?
I think, thank you, Madam Vice President. I think that's a super important point and has definitely been brought up. The idea here is that the entry point is at the 50% or below if it's the extra 5% or the 60% of AMI. We definitely don't want a cliff effect. Right, that's the technical term, I guess they call it. We don't want a cliff effect where they make $1 more and then that's it. That's not, that's not what we're talking about here. And so as incomes, you know, rise, then the threshold, I think we talked about, would be 80% and then the, a new unit would have to be made available. So we're not going to leave people high and dry because they make a dollar, a dollar more. Because that's, that's not what we're trying to do.
Could the Commissioner make some comments too, please? Thank you for, Chair.
Sure, yeah.
I think that we do need to clarify, or we would need to clarify at the time of initial application. Because as stated in the law, it would state 50% AMI for the additional 5 and 60% AMI. So I think that we would need additional clarification at the time of initial application. There's been discussion about how to handle something if, you know, someone's area median income, if their income changes from one year to the next and they're going to renew their lease or something along those lines, you know, how to handle and kind of have that be something that could go up to the 80% or whatever. But I think that we do need to be very clear and look at because if we were reading the law as written, the entry level threshold is 60% AMI, not 61%. And it isn't between 60% and 80%, right? It's like 60% and below. So, or 50% and below. So I think that that is a good point to bring up because I think we have discussed what would happen once someone's in the unit. But as written, it would definitely, I think, impact that initial application.
Is that state law or federal law?
No, that's, that would be based off of?
That's what we have written currently.
It's based off of this draft legislation in terms of the AMI percentage.
But I, I'm glad that you brought that up, Madam Vice President, so we will clarify that. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we have Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman, thank you so much for shepherding this bill. And I know that it's difficult to balance everything. But I wanted to follow up with you about two additional points that I mentioned at the last hearing related to the feasibility gap. One of the questions I had asked was about the funding of such subsidy, whether it come from the city or come from the state or come from the federal. Have we, do we have any movement on that?
Yeah, so that when we're, if I understand what you mean by feasibility gap, it's the difference between the market rent that would be collected versus the rent that ends up getting collected. Is that gap? And so the proposal at the moment is to have that gap at the end of the year, there will be some reporting by the developer to say how much that they didn't end up collecting. And then have a write-off, if you will, for lack of a better term, off of the property taxes. And so that's, we're still working that out. Obviously, Councilman Cohen was concerned about that because obviously it's more money from the city coffers. And so we're still in, talking about, you know, whether it's parking or whether it's density bonus. The other piece is for the 50% or below area median income, which is that additional 5%. That's where the possibility of applying for the project-based vouchers and other types of subsidy comes in. And that's federal money.
Yes.
So, and then you and I had talked about possibly, do you?
I'm sorry to interrupt. That's only at the 5%, that's only at the 5% added on. What I'm looking for is, you know, outside of the property taxes that hasn't been confirmed yet, is there any type of subsidy at the city or state level that can assist with that making not only the city whole, but also the developer, once, you know, they report this at the end of the year, where is that particular money going to come from?
Right, and I think that was a question from Finance. And what they said in their last report also was that, let's say it's 15%. It's not, but let's just say. That the, their report basically said that if that was in place from 2007 to now, that it would have cost the city $9 million, which is a little less than a million a year. And so granted, I totally understand that, you know, we've got to take a look at all of our credits and we are already spending 129 million a year on tax credits. So, but that is the proposal that's on the table now. I think you and I had talked about possibly figuring out ways that people's income could be different if they were, you know, if BGE was involved or, you know, the water bills and things like that. And we unfortunately can't legislate what BGE does, so we would have to negotiate that with them. And then we have not entered into the discussion around, you know, we already have the discounted water for the Water for All program. And making sure that tenants make sure that they apply for that Water for All program so that at least their, their out-of-pocket amount wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be over.
Right. And the, just so you know, with the, with the project-based vouchers, there's actually an amount that's added for utilities for those families. So, so yeah, so we're still, this is, that one piece is where we are. And so I'm, I really appreciate the feedback we're getting today so that we can go back and, you know, go figure out where that, where that would come from. The other thing is we talked about whether or not that could come from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The trust fund is only for housing families 50% or below area median income. It is not for 60, up to 60. And so for that 10%, it's, we would not be able to use the trust fund.
Okay, no, thank you for that. And the only reason why I'm asking that question is because that type of feasibility ties into the sustainability of the program.
Correct.
Making sure that it's sustainable over a longer period of time. And so, you know, I'm grateful that you're working through all of those kind of kinks and, you know, it's a very difficult and complex question. I would just implore that if we kind of move in that direction, kind of moving towards a vote, we have some sort of plan in place for the feasibility gap.
Of course.
Yeah, the feasibility gap.
Long-term, yeah, yep.
Mr. President, can I ask a second question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is for Commissioner Kennedy. You know, I want to really understand the operations of said program, you know, knowing that DCHD is already under extreme operations, you know, capacity issues with staffing and working. How are you all going to leverage and/or staff this type of program in the department?
That's a very good question. And I think one of the things we originally were hoping, you know, we got the amendments when we got them, but one of the things that we had set aside time to do was to try to actually go from A to Z. You know, one of the things that we've said as the agency administration from the beginning is that, you know, we're looking to achieve something that is able to be implemented, that is easy to understand, easy to interpret, easy to implement, not just on the agency side, but also for the developer side so that you know exactly what you're looking at and what you're responsible for and so that it is streamlined and, you know, simple. That is the goal. So that potentially, you know, we're looking at one person that within our team or, you know, two or something and then having to staff, you know, the advisory board. And then there would be some questions just about what we think about with frequency on that. Because that would be something that we do want to consider because the inclusionary, and we could look at that within regulations. And so like the inclusionary plan needs to be submitted before and approved or the board can't approve it, but it needs to be submitted and reviewed before a permit could be issued. So then how often does that board of volunteers have to come together? Because we also know that we're all in wanting to move permits, you know, for projects, you know, through. And if it's like, well, I can't get this permit because the board hasn't met. So there's questions along those lines just in terms of implementation and timing when we're thinking about how to best do that. So do I have exact answers? No. But the goal is definitely that we want to get to something that is, you know, we're going to have an online application, so it's streamlined there. We know that, we already have infrastructure for that. But it's really kind of trying to figure out, like taking a project from point A at the starting point all the way through at the different components, right? So if the bill says, you know, that additional, if the, if you get additional subsidy after your inclusionary, if additional subsidy comes in to the project. subsidy after your inclusionary, if additional subsidy comes in to the project, then you have to take that into consideration. Or there's the point in time as well. I think that if a project is two years after the 30-year affordability timeframe, and then the entire-
Yeah.
You know, there's just different pieces there that I think we just need to look through and think through, to make sure that we're, once again, creating something that will produce the units that we all want to see produced, and be able to be implemented and staffed properly, and, you know, make sense to everybody involved.
And you bring up two, you bring up two points. One of the points that you just raised caused, talked about a bottleneck related to managing and assessing those, those projects. That's what I'm really concerned about within the department, but also that lag period from, from projects that were grandfathered in at the 30 years, then they would reset if they get another, another person to take over after the 30 years. What would that look like?
I think, you know, I think that that's one of the areas that we still have some questions about, and there are some other thoughts that came up to mind today, even when we're talking about subsidy and timing and, you know, what is going to work in terms of actually being able to create the units with some of that timing and turnover as well, the way that the additional kind of subsidy comes in. If there's a sale at year 12, the high-performance tax credit's on the first 10 years, not that time, and that all goes to the first owner. So there's some other questions, I think, that still need to be addressed during, over that.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have a quick follow-up for you, Commissioner Kennedy. So, Councilwoman Porter.
So, I was just, as you were having the exchange with Councilwoman Porter, my quick question was, have we thought about creating a mechanism for thresholds? One where it goes to the board if there's significant subsidy that's going to be awarded to someone, whereas there's not significant-
You gotta go put your, yeah.
The question I had from thinking about hearing your exchange between Councilwoman Porter, is can we create a threshold where there's a certain amount of subsidy goes to the board, and a certain amount of subsidy can come directly to us, the director, where we're not bottleneckling, hurting people who are, projects are needed, that are small projects, versus large projects, when we think about the large amounts of subsidy we need?
I would, I would defer to your colleague, the council member on that and other work. In the kind of draft outline of legislation that we put together as part of the enterprise report and plan, in that we actually eliminated the advisory board entirely for that specific reason, because it was thought that if it was a piece of legislation that was streamlined, that was very prescriptive, with very clear outlines, that it could be easily managed, because there, you know, there wouldn't be needs for any of the waivers if everything was in line. And a review of a checklist of what was needed to be included in the inclusionary plan, et cetera, that that could be managed internally with staff and approved. So I think that, you know, there's kind of a negotiations meeting of the, you know, a negotiations meeting of including the board for that reason, to, you know, review those plans. So I think that that would be something that we could discuss further, but I'd defer to the councilperson on specifically questions about that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, in talking with my colleagues, it was really important to keep the board. So, colleagues here, so the issue is, I hear the issue around the bottlenecking and how we can do that. I like the idea of threshold, so it's something that we can certainly discuss as we go back. So, thank you.
I do want to bring up a quick question. First, Councilwoman, the requirement associated with the feasibility, the annual checkback of the developer, kind of assess what's happened. First of all, when units are empty, that goes into that calculation. Is that, is that accurate, right? And then, second of all, for us to do that, I'm not sure if Deputy Director Sennemy knows, if you spoke into the Law Department, do we need state action to allow us to do that with the taxes?
Yeah, so that's a-
I want to be really clear in what we're communicating.
Yep. That's a great question. So, we did have a very long discussion about this. And the way that it generally works is that if we are creating a new tax credit on property taxes, we do have to go to the General Assembly for permission to do so. However, what we discovered in this particular case is that if this write-off, or credit, or tie-back, or whatever we call it, is associated, can be associated with the high-performance rental tax credit that we have passed and just expanded for another five years, because that tax credit is broad enough, and the permissions from the General Assembly that came with that credit are broad enough, that we could define the terms. And so that we would still need a separate bill to do this, but that we would need, would not need to go to the General Assembly if that's how we're doing it. The other way we had thought about it was that it would be a direct remittance and a payment, rather than just off of the property taxes. But that, you know, I know Bob was doing some analysis on whether that made any sense or not, but that's, that's where we are in terms of trying to figure out the logistics. So, but to your question, generally, when we create a new tax credit, yes, we have to go to the General Assembly. In this case, we could tie it to the market-rate rental, and just expand the parameters, and put in all of the conditions in a separate piece of legislation tied to that credit.
Yeah, that is of some concern of mine.
Okay.
Because that essentially locks in high-performance tax credits forever.
They have to be reauthorized still.
Say that again?
They would still have to be reauthorized, like in-
No, what I'm saying is, I mean, we're never going to want to go away from an affordable, you know, inclusionary housing bill. We're going to always want to have inclusionary housing legislation-
Right.
And if it's directly tied to high-performance tax, that's basically going to essentially indefinitely tie it, and, you know, in perpetuity, you know, allow for high performance to kind of stay there, right?
I hear what you're saying, yes.
The concern with high performance, we all know, and, you know, we've been attempting to work with administration, will continue to work with administration, is just, like everything, the lack of equity of seeing these high-performance tax credits throughout the city, and only seeing them in certain neighborhoods specifically. So, that is of some concern that we probably need to continue to kind of flush out and work on.
Yeah, we actually didn't want to go in that direction.
Yeah, that's-
But that's the option that was, those are the two options that were given, if we can find something else, or that it would be literally a remittance and have nothing to do with a, with a tax credit.
Or leverage our state partners to help us-
Exactly.
-put it solely for inclusionary housing.
So is for the-
That's the cleanest way of doing it. I do have concern of, again, tying it to the, to-
Yeah, I, I hear you and agree. I, you know, just wanted to outline what those parameters were, and we would just have to figure out the best way to do that. Yep.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Quick question for Deputy Director, Finance Director Sennemy. In the November the 17th meeting, I asked for some specific things from Finance. One was on the model, because we keep using this $9 million number. One was on that model, and you told us, you know, it compounded exponentially, got greater towards the end of it. So it's not fair to say that it's about $1 million a year. And then the other piece that I asked you guys for was the comparison of that $10 million that was of concern to Finance, as it relates to comparing that to the amount of pilot money that goes out on a annual basis. Were you able to come up with that?
Yes, actually, I thought the question, I came prepared to talk about, you had asked about TIFs.
Well, pilots and TIFs, the amount of money that, just for the larger audience, I think Finance had some concern, because they did a modeling of if this was to go into law, that over the past 10 years, the city would have lost nine point some million, would have to pay in $9.7 million. So, the natural question for me was, well, you know, in that same time period, how much did we put into TIFs and pilots? You know, $9 million didn't really seem scary to me over 10 years. So, wanted to kind of understand and know that comparison, but then also wanted to actually see the model that you came up with.
Yeah, and so we did send the model over, which showed that, yes, it was a little bit less than $10 million over a 10-year period, but there was, you know, there's a period, with any tax credit, there's a piece where you're issuing a tax credit, there's another one next year, there's another one next year, it's kind of growing. And then it gets to kind of a point where an old one drops off and a new one drops on, so it kind of steadies out. So the, the cost over the 10-year period was 9.9 million, but in the last year, it was 3.2 million, which I see that, that is more of the recurring cost. One thing to be very clear on, though, that analysis was just if we did this for the core sub-markets. And what's being proposed here is doing the citywide. So, I mean, I'm going to, I'm running numbers now on this, it's going to be way more expensive than what we established in terms of just the core sub-markets, just to be very clear for folks. On the TIF, TIF and pilot question, so I don't see them as, I don't see tax credits and TIFs necessarily as the same thing. Let me just explain why. On a TIF, the piece that we have in the budget, and I do have the numbers for these for the last five years, is how much debt service we're paying for, for the TIF. And remember, on a TIF, the debt service is paid for by the development presumably that goes up for that, for that new development. So, you know, I think there's a debate on whether that's truly city subsidy, or whether that new development is just paying for that. But the numbers for the TIF, at least for the last five years, fiscal '19 up to '23 is 12.5 million, 13.7, 13.2, 17.5, 21.8. So it's been growing a little bit. There's new projects, there's the Harbor Point, there's the Port Covington, of course, first phase. But I don't necessarily see that as, as the same as a subsidy here.
A comparison, apples, oranges. So if we eliminate TIF and just focus on pilot, do you see that as a better comparison?
I think the pilot is a, is a better comparison, because that is a true tax abatement.
Do you have the pilot number?
I don't have that, those numbers yet. I'm gathering those. It's a little bit more complicated, because you have to go back to all the agreements and see how much in each fiscal year. But I can get you an estimate on that by the end of this week. We're very close to kind of gathering that info.
All right, thank you. Next, we're going to go to, we'll go to you, Chairman Costello. But first, we're going to Chairman Conway.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chairman Costello, was that specific to what, Finance Director?
Please, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, before we go to you, Conway, go ahead, Chairman Costello.
To the President's inquiry, I just want to make sure we're clarifying between three different pilots, if you will. The, you know, the high-performance market rate is a matter of right credit, a traditional pilot, as well as an affordable housing pilot, because I think affordable housing pilots, for obvious reasons, have a different impact and a different necessity.
Yes.
So, Mr. President, if I could add that on to your request, or if you could just kind of put some-
Itemize them out, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you.
I think that, Mr. Sennemy, you were, you were going to do the, the one that's just based on the market rate, right? You weren't going to put in the affordable housing pilot as part of this, correct?
So, for the analysis on the inclusionary bill-
Well, let me be clear, just real quick, because I'm kind of the maker of the question. I want the affordable-
Oh, okay.
-pilot to be in there, and here's why. We're only doing those affordable pilots in certain parts of the city. We're only doing high-performance tax credits in other parts of the city. We've consistently talked about the problem of concentration of poverty throughout our city, yet I'm not seeing the level of mixed income for new developments that we all, hopefully, and idealistically, would like to see in throughout our city. So, that's why it's important to know how much the city's putting in to some of these, you know, 4%, 9% tax credit deals, because that's money on the table that we should be looking at, still helping the same population, but doing it in a way that's not just, you know, doing another 30% tax credit deal on Park Heights, right? So, or in East Baltimore. We understand and know our history around housing, and we understand and know that that has been a problem and a concern. So I do want to see all the numbers associated with what we're putting in, so we can honestly, and have a very comprehensive discussion on what's going to be the big, the best return on investment, not just in bricks and mortars, but also development of communities and families.
Got it, yeah. And that's what we were, that's what we were pulling. Our pilot database includes for-profit pilots, which we don't do much of anymore at all. Most of them are the, are the nonprofit ones, which we still have a few per year.
But to Chairman Costello's point, if you could itemize them out, when you provide it to us. You have another point to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think the last time we did a pilot, if I'm not mistaken, was God State Center back in 2016.
Yeah.
And that never ended up going through, for obvious reasons. The reason I ask that question, Mr. President, is because DHCD has done a very good job of encouraging affordable housing pilots in middle-market neighborhoods over the past four or five years, at least some of the ones that I've been involved with. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Chairman Conway. The floor's yours.
All really, really good questions and points. First, I just want to commend Councilwoman Ramos thus far for the work. It seems like we still got some work to do on this. This is a very, very complicated issue. I think we all realize that. And even more, it's a numbers, a numbers game. And the more we play with the numbers, we, the more we find more numbers to play with. So, I think we still got more work to do here. But I appreciate the creativity that you brought to the process thus far. I just wanted to kind of echo some of the sentiments brought earlier about leveraging parking and density. Before we get to some of the dollar-for-dollar write-offs, I think by way of ability for the city not to forego tax revenue, that would be huge, huge, huge for making sure that we can take care of the lighting, take care of the roads, take care of the sidewalks, to help those developments, developments in that area succeed thereafter. So I certainly would like to, if at all possible, have those things be considered before. I'm not sure how we can write that into the bill, but I would like that to be considered, if that is something that does go forward. And then I think, and I was kind of combing through the amendments so far, and I just came across it, so I've answered my own question. But in understanding the cap for additional subsidy, specifically that dollar-for-dollar, understanding what the cap is for that, it seems it's going to be 15%, so no more than 15% can be, 15% for the-
Right.
Right. So I think I've found the own answer to my question, so I-
Yeah, that's the proposal at the moment.
Yeah, okay.
But it sounds like, from the feedback we're getting today, that we need to rethink what that even looks like.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Chairman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mine is a question, and the rest is a statement. I hope this is going to be citywide. The exclusionary housing, I think it sunset, but I support the advocates. But have y'all rode through and stopped in Broadway East? Have you stopped in Greater Greenmount? Have you stopped in South Clifton Park? Have you stopped in Dolly Park and see all that disinvestment that's still sitting there, and we sitting here talking about inclusionary housing? They got excluded. Nobody's riding through there and see what Ms. Jones, Mr. Henry live next door to vacant houses with squatters, roof gone, yard dirty, toxic, mold. And we here again, still talking about inclusionary housing. I don't see nothing in this bill. I don't see no amendments in this bill that's going to benefit them people that I see every day, that's got to live next door to that mess. So, to the advocates, I'm, you want to ride with me? Let me show you what some vacant houses is, what there been disin, the disinvestment. And I got seniors living next door to houses that don't have a roof, and they sick. Come on, ride with me. I can show you some disinvestment. I can show you some exclusionary housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Are there any additional questions or concerns, Madam Vice President? The floor's yours.
Just a question, you know, we were talking there for a minute about pilots and TIFs and so on, but has there been any discussion or partnerships or agreements with like inter-local agreements, or, you know, contract discussions inter-locally? And around, you know, Baltimore City is, we still consider ourselves as the economic engine of the state, and we need to have interlo, even though we're, this is a city-driven thing, we are surrounded by major counties. Has there been talks about inter-local locking agreements? If not, I think that's also another important piece that would help us get to where we want to be as well.
Yeah.
Comments from anyone? Comments from anyone?
I think the, the question is, you know, do we have MOUs or, you know, specific agreements with Baltimore County, Anaruno County, Iowa County? You know, understanding and knowing the way housing has gone and the level of concentration of poverty.
Partnerships, yes, are important.
I think that's what she's trying to get at.
I think, you know, it's, we, there are specific things as related to vouchers and choice and, you know, moving across jurisdictional lines, et cetera, which, you know, comes into play. I think that a question when we do think about this, right, in terms of inclusionary, the, the balance that is there, and I, you know, it was also highlighted in the article in the Baltimore Sun this morning, that, you know, this is, you know, inclusionary housing is a complex intervention within the market, as the official from New York City stated. And the numbers, they, they, they matter. And when we are thinking about citywide versus core markets versus AMI versus additional, additional AMI and additional vouchers, that this is a balance that we're playing, and I think that that does come into play when we think about Baltimore City as a jurisdiction within the region, and what we can do in terms of partnerships, but also what does that do in terms of our overall market? So, I think that we do have to be mindful and thoughtful, and it is part of that balance approach that we've talked about in many of our meetings, and that I think Councilman Conway just brought up in terms of, I think, you know, we still have some work to do on numbers and where to go and what those partnerships and additional ways to look at it.
Thank you, because there are, you know, organizations that work with our city and work with, you know, national organizations that, you know, that could help and give ideas and just, you know, be partners and come up with some kind of, you know, agreement. And I just want to make sure that those things are looked at as we continue to work and move in this direction.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we have a question from Councilwoman Porter.
Commissioner Kennedy, I wanted to follow up on, thank you, I wanted to follow, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I wanted to follow up on Councilman, Councilman Stokes' question related to the metrics used for, like, how do you determine neighborhoods that are in transition, even though, you know, we're not talking about this citywide, but one of the things that I think we have to be cognizant of is making sure that we are, we're able, again, sustainability of the program, scaling of the program to, you know, having that middle neighborhoods, but also some that are considered not transitional with even in the next five to seven years. And so, can you share that? I was looking at the, the report, and, you know, they use specifically on page... I'm just bringing it up real quick, specifically on page six, when we talk about Phase Two policy and legislative framework for future policy, you look at different parameters such as evaluation of rents and sale prices, development conditions, construction costs, recent development trends, and projected development activity within that particular area. So, how are you all leveraging that framework within some of the communities that he's, he's mentioned? Because as you can imagine, and as I know you're aware of, there are variations within that, within that, that, that metric that will determine whether or not we move in the, we move development into that direction. And Dolly Park is very different, Darly Park, excuse me, Darly Park is very different than some of our middle neighborhoods that we are seeing, that they are next on the docket.
No, it is, and I think that, you know, we are doing, we work very closely with Councilman Stokes and the communities, both impact investment areas, as well as outside, to recognize the, you know, historic disinvestment that has happened, and the exclusionary housing that, you know, Councilman Stokes mentioned earlier, and the importance in terms of looking at strengthening those markets, creating opportunities for all, you know, to align with President Mosby's comments, you know, the goal that we have, that I have, that I think we all share, is wanting to have inclusive, thriving communities of, you know, places where you have, you know, inclusive from income, race, gender, all, all of the, all of the inclusive diversity that makes a thriving community. So, there are communities across the city, which is one reason why I think it is important when we think about this and, you know, look at things and across, you know, there's been statements in terms of jurisdiction, other jurisdictions across the country that have done inclusionary, and what they were at in terms of AMI and percentage, I think we do need to just pay attention and think about, because inclusionary is, as I'm gonna, you know, cite the official from New York City, it is, it's market-specific on specific areas and specific markets, right? So, within the city of Baltimore, we do have different housing values and different rents and rent percentages and AMIs and values across the city and different neighborhoods. Some of those, you know, we need to have affordability, because we have, you know, when we look at our, we still need to have affordability, we need to have long-term affordability, and where can we get that, and where can we provide opportunity? And I think that's one thing with inclusionary, it is inclusionary, it is specifically, it's not a solution for all of our affordable housing crisis that we have in the city. It is one tool that has a very specific use, which is to provide opportunity for residents of a lower income to have access, to be able to live in an area that they otherwise would not be able to afford to live in. And that is extremely important, that we offer that for our residents, and we have to also be mindful of the market conditions and so forth. And I think that's where part of this comes in, in terms of cost, you know, to, cost of construction and cost of all of that plays in, and then what market rates. Do we want to see, I know some, you know, communities have said, well, we want to be able to have more equity in our home, or, you know, higher-priced values. We also have to be careful that we have the protections in place, right? So that we don't have displacement, so that we have protections for our, our long-term residents. So if we are seeing rising market values or a neighborhood changing from, you know, a transitional kind of mid-range or into a mid-market, you know, you want to be able to continue to have people to be able to stay where they've grown up, to be able to afford to be where they are, and that's gonna take a number of different tools to be able to make that happen. And this is, this is one, so we want to be supportive, we want to be supportive of being able to have an increase of, of market, but we also need to balance that with also being able to have places where people can afford to stay.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just to kind of piggyback off that, and that's where I think, you know, some of the numbers are getting, are getting caught, you know, are getting caught up, because if we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, 2,500 units that are needed, housing units that need it across the city, if this only addresses 10 to 15% of, of that, of that 2,500, like, you know, we need to make sure, we need to make sure that we're having a coordinated approach, because in communities like, you know, the councilman just named, we're going, we're going to need, we're going, we're going to need that in order for the communities to thrive, and if not, then it's just gonna be a one-stop shop, you know, just a one-off, and that's essentially doing the same thing that we've been doing thus far, so.
Can I add to that?
Do you ever follow Chairman Stokes?
Yes.
Chairman Stokes?
Just a point of information to Commissioner. I actually have three constituents now. We had the exclusionary housing at Sunset. You know how much money they paying a rent right now in Broadway East? $2,700. So, inclusionary housing has not, has not been used where it need to be used. And we sit here and keep talking about the word inclusionary, sound good, but if you're not going into those neighborhoods, and I'm seeing this, just struggling, I getting calls from the three constituents, say they can't even pay their rent, it's because we had the developers come in, they developed the property, and they charged somebody $2,700 a month for rent. That's appalling.
And then, Councilwoman Ramos?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate this discussion, because we, we do need all the tools in the toolbox. Many of us have been, and I actually had an op-ed in the Banner on Friday about the vacant property strategies, and the, the money we're actually gonna need, you know, to make that work. And, and so, that, it's gonna take everything. So, admittedly, this is, this is one of many tools that we need, and, you know, I have the, the puzzle in my head, trying to put it all on paper as to what we, you know, what do we use when and how do we do it? We'll see some initiatives happening in the, in the spring on this, so, but I, I, obviously, true to my heart, is making sure that, and the councilman and I share Darly Park, you know, are, that is one of our key areas to make sure that we're not displacing anybody, but that, that folks are not living at vacant properties anymore. That is really, really critical. So, I, I appreciate the discussion and look forward to continuing the discussion with, with everybody on that particular piece. And then this bill is, is one of many tools to, to address it. And so, I think you're right that we do, the, the $2,700 is crazy for rent, so that's a, that's a whole nother discussion. That I'm sure we'll take up someday as well, so, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have comment, and then I have a follow, and then I have a comment about follow-up for it. So, unlike most colleagues here, I don't have any of those markets that we would do a lot of inclusionary in. So my question again is, have we looked at comprehensively, because we have the investment zones that we have in West Baltimore with me, who we've had the red line communities, but what I'm looking at is comprehensively, what have we had that discussion with planning about their comprehensive, comprehensive housing plan, as well as the strategies around that? Because I think when I look at this bill, plus the other bills that are coming down the pipeline, how do we make sure that this is not disjointed interventions that we're doing, right? Because if we're doing inclusionary housing, let's identify the zones that we're doing it in as well. But for people like in my district, where we have, AMI has created a rental crisis for affordability because of how it's calculated, how do we then have interventions there to help my residents? And then for my seniors who are paying high property taxes right now and holding up the city, how do we do an intervention at the General Assembly to make sure that they're not displaced when we do bring other residents in? Because I, right now, we have Live Baltimore doing buys just to bring black people back into West Baltimore, and it's working in my district. But I'm afraid that for those seniors who have stayed there, they're gonna be priced out, and then we gotta find ways to pay for their taxes. So I just want to make sure that we keep this conversation going, but also make notice to the fact we have a comprehensive housing plan that needs to be created. We have to make amendments soon to more, more irrespective, the entire zoning code too as well. I do, Councilman Dorsey has the bill, we need to have those conversations where these things are not just separate conversations, but holistically how they impact each other, because we don't want to have an unintended consequence that we didn't see coming down the pipe. In addition to that, my question is, have we done any work, and this is from the administration about the AMI question, how we, have we advocated to the state about how do we recalculate the AMI so it's true to what residents are experiencing in Baltimore City? Because I can tell you right now, I have rental units in Medfield that are $3,500 a month, I have rental units in Ashbury and other areas where they're $2,600 a month, I have rental units below North Avenue that are almost $1,200 to $1,500 a month, but some of those units, they're not all the same. My $3,500 rental unit, look, is a brand-new luxury home, whereas my $1,700 below North Avenue, I've always had to bring code enforcement for it. I just want to make sure that we start having those conversations, because we need to have better enforcement, but also be able to calculate, meet people where their need, where the means need to be met.
Was that, was that a question?
I just want to make sure that we put on the, I just want to make sure the administration can address that, like, what are we doing actively for, about AMI, as well as any tax credits or things we thought about at the General Assembly for displacement as well.
I can answer part of that. Say, Councilman, I'm happy to have that conversation with you and figure out ways that we can approach the state or our federal partners in, in how AMI is calculated. Just to, on the, there was a bill last year that Senator Hayes and Delegate Feldmark put in to make sure that the homeowners' property tax credit, which has been an amazing credit for our elders and people of low income, to be able to have the state basically pay for their taxes. The problem with that credit is that you have to apply every year. And so this bill, it did not pass, but hopefully will pass this year, and I'm committed to help the senator make that happen, to make sure that you don't have to apply every year, that the reconsideration isn't a different, is a, is done in a way, or the reaffirmation of the income is done in a way that isn't every year, and that our elders can, can continue to take advantage of it and not have to apply every year. So, we'll continue, there's another bill that the Ways and Means Committee will be putting in similar to that as well. That's the best credit, I think, that we have, that the state ends up paying for the taxes and the city is made whole. So, I, and I appreciate that, because we, we absolutely need to expand the use of that credit in every single neighborhood, particularly those where folks are aging in police and don't want to get priced out. So, that's important. And I understand that the city is going through our comp plan, and that there's supposed to be a comprehensive housing plan attached to that or with that. Commissioner, can you talk a little bit more about how that's gonna work? Because what we did four or five years ago, when I was at CDN, we asked the state to do a comprehensive needs assessment about the affordability needed in the state, and that needs assessment came out, you know, four years later, so it was a longer time And those are good numbers to use as a base, from an affordability standpoint and the number of units that we need, but then we also have the vacancy piece as well. So, I don't know where that's happening and how that's moving, if you want to ask that.
Yep, we're still working on that and, you know, finalizing some timelines associated with the comprehensive, comprehensive housing plan, but it is part of the work with the revision of the comp plan. And one of the very specific things is, you know, we do have the housing needs assessment from the state, we also have an understanding of number of units, we have the, you know, different studies from Live Baltimore, et cetera, but we also have never, as a city, placed specific goals on what we're looking at in terms of the number of units of affordability that we want preserved, the number of new units that we need created, the number of, you know, units from a unit count in terms of goals on a very specific timeframe, timeframe, years, and also funding and, and needs and monetary needs associated with that, and what are some of those tools? We have already a significant number of the actual tools, and we're already, in many of our neighborhoods, utilizing the tools that would also be outlined in a plan, but we also have never set those specific goals that a comprehensive housing plan looks at. So that's what we're definitely hoping to get to in the, in the long run.
Is that in con, in conjunction with the Iowa Baltimore work, or is it separate?
Uh, conjunction.
So the, if the, the, the meetings and everything that Planning is having is also considering, I mean, I've seen the topics that they're considering.
Yeah, and we're, our staff has been at, at all of those meetings, and we're taking that information, information back as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or concerns? Hearing none. Commissioner Kennedy, the middle neighborhoods report, when do we expect that to come out? Is that like first quarter next year, or do you know?
That is a good reminder, and I have to check. I know that we have the draft, and I need to follow up, because I know that was a question from Councilwoman Cray from the last hearing, so we have that as the draft, but we will be moving on that, because we also have ARPA funds that are working to be able to get that work started as well in a number of the neighborhoods. So I will make sure that we follow up with the Department of Planning and our team.
You could just let us know, I mean, that's been a common theme throughout some of the questions today. And then, just looking at follow-up from last meeting, making sure everything was covered. The only other thing is Deputy Director Sennett, if you could resend the, respond to that email, resend the, the modeling, we still, we, staff hasn't been able to locate that, so. Any additional questions or concerns? Councilman Conway?
Thanks, Mr. President. Again, thank you to everyone for being here, and definitely appreciate some of the comments about the need for a comprehensive view on... about the need for a comprehensive view on all the different housing programs we have. Agree with my colleague also, very concerned about the permitting process and the speed at which permits are currently administered in the city of Baltimore. At the same time, you know, hope that we don't make perfect the enemy of the good. Know that we have the Fair Housing Act and stand to lose federal funds if we do not do something around inclusionary housing, and that fundamentally, this is about people being able to live in a decent, in a neighborhood, in a building that is integrated, that's mixed, that's diverse, and that that should be a goal that we all have. And so, again, I appreciate sincerely all the, all the different folks, all the concerns, and I hope that we really do move forward, because we need to pass a law. And so, again, appreciate our colleague from the 14th District really taking the lead on this, and hope that relatively soon, we can get to a place where it's not going to be perfect, there will be compromise, but that we move forward on this issue, because I think we owe it to the people we serve. Thank you.
Any additional questions or concerns? Hearing and seeing none. Do you want to close this out? You have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank the agencies, advocates, developers, coming together for the last couple of weeks, and we will all still be meeting to work some of this out. I also want to thank my colleagues. Excellent questions today and always as we've had these conversations. I think that your input for us to move forward has been really invaluable today. So, I really do appreciate that everybody spent so much time with us this afternoon going over what we've done so far and providing us with guidance as to what we need to do, need to do next. So, I really appreciate it, and thanks for the opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And with that, that'll adjourn this meeting. We do not have another meeting scheduled. We will obviously put information out to ensure that we have full participation. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for participating. We absolutely love you.